The first item is the approval of the agenda, something that we neglected to put on the agenda, but should is a motion to move the March meeting date, which I think was the 27th, to move that to April 2nd, because there are some conflicts with that prior date. So I'd like to add that under new business. Are there any other proposals to change the agenda? Right, I move to accept the agenda then as amended? So, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. So we will do that then. Brief announcements by authority members. Anybody have anything? Okay. We'll move on to the public comment section. This is an opportunity for any members of the public here in the room, or anyone who's on the video, to use your raise hand function, or can literally raise your hand, and let us know you'd like to say something and have an opportunity to address the authority. We'll give you a moment to ring in, and then we'll move on if no one does.
There are three attendees, Mr. Chair, but nobody has raised their hand.
That's how I see it as well. Alrighty. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. You should have a consent agenda. You should have received one in advance. It's your motion to approve the consent agenda.
Aye.
Thanks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda is approved. We've got the approval of the January 24th meeting minutes next. Mr. Secretary, did you receive any substantive comments on those? Everyone has had a chance to at least see them, if not review them in detail. I'd like to move that we approve the minutes.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Thank you very much. And that brings us to old business. We're fortunate to be able to welcome folks from Bright Speed here this evening. And Jason, maybe you want to do some introductions for us?
Yeah, we wanted to start with a little history about actions that the Board of Supervisors, as well as the Broadband Authority took. So in January of 2022, the Board of Supervisors held a work session specifically related to, at the time, CenturyLink telephony performance reliability issues. And in February of 2022, the Broadband Authority, as well as supervisors, submitted written and oral testimony to the State Corporation Commission proceedings regarding sale of Lumen's assets to now Bright Speed. The SEC did approve that sale, obviously, under a joint stipulation, which was shared with us in a subsequent letter between the SEC and Connect Holding regarding service, referred to as the Service Quality Settlement Term Sheet. And that laid out a couple of key provisions. First, voice out-of-service restoration, no less than 80% within 48 hours, and no less than 95% within 96 hours. Medical necessity customers out-of-service restoration within 24 hours, and no more than 3% outside plant trouble report. The letter also provided a commitment to rehabilitate 52 cables in Almarle County along the 2,500 working lines, and increase regulatory scrutiny, kind of for the years subsequent to the transfer. The transfer did go in October of 2023, 2022, I'm sorry. And just to summarize Ava's prior actions on this, the letter that was sent to the SEC asked for three things: that Lumen makes sufficient efforts to remedy current service disruptions. That Connect Holding commits sufficient investments to remedy network infrastructure deficits. And that Connect Holding commit to not retire copper infrastructure until sufficient replacement is available. The Board of Supervisors sent a similar letter with a couple of additional requests. Commit to resolve outstanding service issues prior to and after the transfer. Assess the costs of necessary repairs throughout Lumen's ILEC assets in Virginia. Increase oversight and reporting regarding restoration of service times. Commit to not retire these assets along residents' desire copper telephony as means to access 911, and provide credit to residents charged for services during any unreasonably prolonged outage. The Lumen letter committed to four out of the five requests. It did not commit to a, to not retire proper assets until customers no longer wanted it. And with that, I will take a brief pause to bring up the slides prepared by Bright Speed. But we have Mr. Chris Dillon from Bright Speed, along with, is that Mr. Price? From Bright Speed to share some updates on their progress.
No, you can stand anywhere.
Hello, I'm Chris Dillon. I'm a Government Affairs Director for Bright Speed. It's Jason Price, he's our Regional Supervisor for Operations. He is the man you really need to know. A little bit of background about me. I came to work at Bright Speed six months ago, so I really know what I'm doing these days. I am a former Assistant County Manager in Wake County, North Carolina. We had a $1.8 billion budget when I left. I was former Assistant County Manager in Vance County, North Carolina. It's a very rural, very poor county. Also worked for the Legislature of Wildlife Resource. I've been in Government Affairs on the government side for 25 years. And now I'm on the product side. So if you'll move forward, Jason, I'll talk a little bit about Bright Speed. Y'all have been at this a lot longer than I have. Bright Speed is not CenturyLink. We are not CenturyLink. We purchase assets from CenturyLink and Lumen. We are a, well now, we're about a 16-month-old company. And on this slide, you'll see, we agreed to the purchase. The purchase was approved in 20 states, including Virginia. And since that purchase was approved in October of 2022, we've got our call time down to less than a minute when you call our repair line. Jason can attest this. If you called for two, for repair that same day dispatched, and we've hired over 41 additional technicians on top of what we acquired in Virginia. We'll make a point. So these are the numbers that Jason was speaking about, our service metrics on our telephone lines. That's what's regulated from the SEC. And that's what the agreement, the joint stipulation was, to get these target rates down. So right now, our out-of-service calls repair within 48 hours. Our target rate internally is 80%. When we purchase the assets from CenturyLink, you know, when I have friends who are in acquisitions and mergers, and you know, when a company knows they're going to sell, just like you know you're going to sell your house, you might not replace the water heater. You might not put a new roof on it. Because you know you're not going to live there anymore. So in the third quarter of 2022, that response rate, that repair rate was 58%. Okay, we've currently got that up to 89%. That's, and that above 85, around, you know, that percentage is consistent. That's a 28.7% increase since the purchase by Bright Speed. This is the 96 hours response rate. Our target internally is 95%. As you can see, when we purchased the assets, it was at 76%. We've increased that by 21.5% to 98.8%, which statistically is 100% repair within 96 hours. And this is a trouble report rate. That's how many tickets we have per 100 customers. The target is three. We've got that down to about 1.3 from 2.4. But you'll see it goes up and down. As people learn they could actually get somebody on the phone, or get somebody to their house, the trouble tickets went up, and we were repairing more and more. So now we've got that down to 1.3, and we're very enthusiastic about that response rate. So again, just to overcap those improvements over the past little bit over a year, a 28.7% increase on the 48 hours, a 21.5% on the 96, and we continue to be about one per 100 customers on our trouble ticket rate. But this is the news that we got late last year. Again, I got hired in August, and I was able to work with the SEC by December of last year. That joint stipulation that Jason talked about, that y'all are very familiar with, that was part of the agreement for the approved purchase in April of 2022, is when that joint stipulation was agreed before the actual purchase in October of 2022. He went over the certain metrics until those targeted metrics were met for three consecutive months. And I would say Jason's team did an amazing job, especially with the medical. What you, you had to have 100% medical for three consecutive months, or 0% medical for three consecutive months. And those are some outlined residents. Those are residents that may have had medical before, and they don't have any more. And we didn't get a chance. Anyway, that was a very, very high hurdle. And I'm not sure if any other ILEC in the state could say the same. These, the specific agreements were with four counties. Both of those reported conditions were terminated on December 7th, just over a year of acquisition. So imagine that first team in 20 states, these ILECs, and in Virginia, we got those stipulations removed within a year, well, just over a year. So this, there's a lot of words on the slide. But these are excerpts from the letter of the State Corporation Commission. I think I shared it with your staff. You know, this is the State Corporation Commission saying, you're right. You've met these, you don't have to report these anymore. And in fact, you've exceeded the stipulation, and congratulations. You, you know, thank you for your service to your customers. So what we are stressing to any constituent, any customer, is call this number. Someone will answer within a minute. Don't call the Broadband Authority staff. Don't call your supervisor. Don't call your city council. Don't call the county administrators' office. They are all busy. They do not come out and repair lines. This is the number you have to call to get a ticket into Jason's team to then start this block. So if you call the Broadband Office, or you call the Administrator's Office, or you call the Attorney's Office, and all it's going to do is triage that for a longer response to get your problem solved. So whomever you speak with that's a customer of Bright Speed, and wants to complain about an outage, or you can give my number to complain about overall. But this is the number they have to call to get that clock ticking for a report. So with that, I'll gladly answer any questions on our telephone service, and our metrics, and the SEC reporting, or any other questions you have about Bright Speed and particularly. But also, I want to give a shout out to Jason Price. His team is the one on the ground, doing the work, in the weather, never taking a day off. And they are to be commended for what they've been able to accomplish within the last 16. Thank you.
I have a question, it could be for either one of you. What's your sense of customer satisfaction with regard to repairs and things like that? Because stuff breaks, and that always happens. And, you know, at the time of the merger, I remember the county residents were pretty chapped about how, you know, service was being done. And where do you think that sense is now?
Well, it's not a merger.
I'm sorry.
And it's not, we acquired, we purchased that.
When the acquiring, you know, company.
And it was not, and I've had county supervisors, I go all over this gorgeous Commonwealth, who've told me, son, you can paint your truck any color you want. I know who you are. I don't know why you didn't buy those assets that were terrible. But those have completely, you know, they've exponentially declined. So now, when I show up to a supervisor's meeting, it's, y'all are doing a good job. I'm not hearing as many complaints. We had a story on the Rampant Haddock News a couple of months ago, that the county administrators aren't hearing it as much. So I wouldn't say that, you know. I would say customers are happy that they don't have to worry about it. You know, it's, the customer service is there, but the fact that it's reliable, and that they don't have to call. It's kind of like, how do you feel about your cable company? Nobody's going to say, I love my cable. You know, it's, I don't have to worry about it. So that's where I think we are, is we're a reliable service that's, that people feel fulfilled with what they're paying for.
One of the categories of problems that we heard about over and over again was a situation where a repair, or install, or some sort of contact with the company was scheduled for a certain date and time, or date and time window. And people would take off time from work and be there. No one showed up. No one called to cancel. You call, and they say, oh, we'll schedule you again for next week. Or, you know, you'd already been scheduled for next week and didn't know about that. How do you think that's going?
There are, you know, instances where we had complaints of that, not few and far between. But when we go to check it on the back end, and I've worked in government and had people complain, and then come to find out, well, you weren't there. Or, you know, so, so that, I'll let Jason speak to his techs about how that's working out.
Um, you're right. So when I came in in '22, in July, we had a problem. We were looking at 30, 40 carryover task briefing. Right, so that's one of the first things that we've been after. Staffed, getting back to better practices and processes within the business. I can say that that's the one thing that my team addresses me, how everyone is carrying it from the prior day. We basically don't go back in the shop until our current dispatch work is done. That's, that's our motto, nobody goes off until the work's done. That's gone back to zero. I think the last time, I think two weeks ago, we maybe had two carryovers, and that was. But, right, it's wind and stuff, things couldn't work well. So carryovers going back to zero, or mental numbers, right? So that means we'll work, we're getting in, we're getting out to the field, and we're completing that day. Work completions are running upwards of 94, 96%. You're going to have some variance in there, because you're grabbing no accesses, things like that, to customers. Yeah, call on out, I'll be here, but you get there, they're not there, right? They're both out of safety, or had to go pick the kid up from school. So you're going to have some non-completes there. But to be consistently in the mid-90s, and upper 90% dial for completed, is a really good accomplishment. So that within itself tells the story that, you know, customers are calling, we're getting the work out to the technicians in the field, and they're getting out, customers getting prepared to go. So it's a good acknowledgement there. Jason, is your team, you know, hearing the kind of complaints and concerns that we used to hear?
I think it's fair to say, at the time of the work session, somewhere between 20% and 50% of our daily work and daily activity included handling complaints and concerns about service reliability, both telephony and internet. And it's absolutely fair to say that that amount, that workload, has diminished considerably. We do not hear complaints of this sort as often. And it is harder to remember the last time that we got a complaint, particularly of no-shows or extended service outages without a response.
Sounds like success. Other questions?
Well, I mean, I just, I have a frequent call to your help, unfortunately. And I do express the concern that you've mentioned. It's always a, well, the technician will be there between eight and five. And that's very difficult for people to express my concern. If there's any, give people a little better window for those sorts of things, it would certainly be helpful. I also will tell you that while I use this phone number that you have, I don't know what I do, but occasionally I'll put in, maybe it's my cell phone number or something, that I don't identify, and it'll throw me into a CenturyLink somehow. And I'll have to call back. It's, no, no. So interesting, relevant, artifacts still from. I said, I.
Thank you for that, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time. Jason, you want to take us forward with the body 2021?
Let me pull that one back up.
So as we all know, we're working towards an amendment to Ava's agreement with Bright Speed in order to include the 10 addresses, nine addresses on Gilbert Station. We have redlines from Bright Speed that Mr. Deloria has looked at, and we will be distributing that shortly. We still need to consult with DHD to confirm whether or not any sort of amendments to the award needs to occur. But we do have the extension through June. And we did receive an update that they are well on their way in construction, and may actually be completed with the work before the agreement even gets inked. The, yeah, Bright Speed has not reported any permitting or material issues. And they will make sure that splicing and testing occurred before service will be offered. But like I said, we will distribute that agreement shortly. And that's all.
Any questions?
Yes, I have an update on it. No mind. Those are constructed. Those are complete.
They're good.
We are currently in back, you know, back of house administrative, getting them actually lit and getting it offered for certain. So the construction is complete. It's, I was on an hour-long phone call, and I learned less after listening to these. Sorry, no offense, but listening to these guys talk right out. But they are constructed, they are complete. We just have to light them on the back end, and we should have that within, hopefully, seven to 10 days. As soon as we do, we'll let you know, we'll also send out the information to the residents that they're ready for services.
That's great news.
And for what it's worth, I have been driving by and taking pictures of the work as it's been done, because we, with the body 2021 history, we've seen there's a history of saying that work is happening. It's not. So also, yes, it is, it is in fact happening. Good to get onboard confirmation of these things we've learned with the body 2021.
Thank you. Very good. Any other questions? Move on to body 2022?
Construction with body 2022 continues apace. We continue to have activations in Red Hill. And Dominion has made its submissions, and I believe a hearing was held. But I believe we're going to have to wait until we find out any details out of that. Staff did review all of Dominion's middles in the hopes that there was a nugget of information about timing. And sadly, in the hundreds of pages, there was nothing particularly relevant to timing. However, if you've been driving around the area, you may have noticed increased activity on whole lines. That is Dominion Middle Mile work. And so where we'd seen a lot of activity middle of last year, we're seeing that same level of activity here again, both in the city and in the county in general. No changes to timelines for announced areas. And that includes the Keene area that continues to be listed as summer 2025. We're hopeful that they're going to be able to push that up. As Mr. Wood explained to us last time, Appalachian Power crews are currently working in a different location. And if another reshuffle occurs, they're going to be able to move Keene back up the list. But for now, they're leaving Keene at summer 2025. And then we got, this is the same progress report from last year. Or last month, we're going to receive another one in two weeks. But the most up-to-date from the remittances shows that we've got progress from October to January, particularly if you look at the passings. So moving from 460 passings to 830 passings is a pretty sizable percentage. Obviously, there's still a lot of work to be done. There's currently a project completion percentage of 17%, but progress is progress.
Yeah. Hopefully, it snowballs as it rolls, you know, down the hill.
That's hope.
Very good. Any questions about body 2022? Then, how about the BAO update? Mr. and Aquintas?
Thank you. So we're going to quickly run through a couple of things, including net inclusion 2024, the ACP wind down, and then the regional digital equity revolution.
Does this include a review of your recent media appearances? Do you have some video?
I do not have some video.
It was very well done.
I'm sure, I'm sure they have already been circulated. I appreciate that. So I was able to attend net inclusion, which is the National Digital Inclusion Alliance's annual gathering. It was in Philadelphia this year. Pictured here is Philadelphia Mayor Sherrell Parker giving an opening remarks. Over 1,300 attendees with appearances by the FCC Chairwoman and officials representing the FCC, Treasury, NTI, and USDA broadband programs. And I was able to participate in a panel discussing life after ACP, and ways that we can promote affordability. Any questions on that?
Just for members of the public, ACP is.
I'm sorry, the Affordable Connectivity Program, which we will discuss in greater depth in a moment. So the Affordable Connectivity Program, as we discussed last time, it is being wound down. Action has not been taken in Congress to refund the program. So it's expected to run out in April. We are expecting any minute now, honestly, guidance for, official guidance that states when the last full month, and the last day of ACP funding will be. At that point, providers will have two weeks to send notifications out to all of their eligible and benefited households about what is going to occur with their accounts. There's a lot of, there's a lot of depth that we can go in there. The key thing to recall, to know, is that the enrollments have closed. We were able to shift our navigators from the grant that is now closed to the Digital Navigator Pilot that is part of the Digital Equity Coalition. And the work of those navigators and all of our outreach with our partners is going to inform impacted households what their options are. We are working with our partner providers to figure out strategies for ensuring that low-income households can stay connected. And ACP Bridge is going to be a part of that.
And how many households in the county will this affect?
There are 2,568 households that are currently enrolled.
That's a lot.
It's a big number.
What was that number?
2,568 as of December 2023. So that doesn't include our last-minute rush to enroll more households in January. But, yeah, it is a large number. And the Regional Digital Equity Coalition. So the RDEC has begun forming its steering committee and planning for work groups and subcommittees. The current steering committee consists of the Piedmont Housing Alliance, Jefferson Area Board for Aging, Jefferson Madison Regional Library, the Blue Ridge Health District, myself in my role with Almarle County, and the Center for Civic Innovation. The Centers for Civic Innovation will serve as fiscal agent, which allows the coalition to operate under CCI's 501(c)(3) status. And this allows the organization to start to do its own fundraising, its own organizing, and its own grant applications. The ACP navigators that we had with the grant, as I mentioned, are now serving under the coalition using funding that was provided, private funding that was provided to the coalition for that purpose.
Give the elevator speech on the Center for Innovation.
The Center for Civic Innovation started a smart C-Ville. And so they worked with local governments to introduce ways to integrate digital technology into engagement and civic governance. Obviously, that has had a big impact, as noted, as seen in the Engage Almarle site and the very, very active way that Almarle County does digital engagement. And post-pandemic, that is really, really important. Since, since the pandemic, they've also shifted their role a little bit towards more of a supporting novel initiatives. And so serving as fiscalation for the RDEC fits that piece of their portfolio.
They serve in kind of the role as a convener in this case? Or it's a vehicle?
It's a vehicle.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Any questions?
All right. And that's all.
We're working.
To new business.
That puts us on a new business, where we've got moving the March 27th meeting to April 2nd. We had previously discussed that March 27th was going to be a problematic date due to other things on the calendar. And so Mike sent out a survey, asking everyone when they'd be most available. Apparently, this was the least favorable day, so we've moved the date to there. I'd like to move, or make the motion, that we move our scheduled date for the March 27th meeting to April 2nd. or make the motion that we move our scheduled date for the March twenty-seventh meeting to April second. Five o'clock, will we be here or elsewhere?
I believe we will actually be in two forty-one. We will send updates.
Wherever it will be, be that date and time somewhere in this facility.
It is already on our phones.
Doesn't get any better than that. Paper it with a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Is there any other business or any other matters that should come before the authority?
Just noting that we have a budget public hearing tonight. County Executive Propose F one twenty-five budget, recommended budget that is Wednesday. Tonight kicks off a public hearing, kind of first public engagement, and it will be a series of work sessions March. There will also be town halls will be organized around the CACs in each of the different districts around that period of time. So only related to the fact that we're, you know, we're in budget season on the local government side.
I noted in some of the written materials prepared, the County Executive's office was noting the success in the plans for having broadband brought to everybody in the county or virtually.
A supportive part of the strategic.
Over the course of the next year and a half or two years. That was, yeah, nice to be there. Contributed some small part.
I'd like to acknowledge how much simpler our meetings are when we are not overseeing the contract directly with vendors. And instead, we are participating in a multi-county coalition, which we benefit from the us being an added level of oversight beyond the primary oversight. Our meetings are substantially shorter now that we're not responsible for those contracts.
I don't know why you didn't suggest it earlier. Anything else? Then I would like to move to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. We stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.